November eighteenth. Voltal. Cooper?
Here.
Kami?
Here.
Cory?
Here.
Klishman's here and is excused. Would everybody please stand up to Pledgical Agent?
Pledgial Agent. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which has sent one nation under God, individual liberty and justice.
Approval of the agenda. Cory?
I'd like to make a motion to amend the agenda to switch number five with ten. And ten to five.
Second. Are any discussion? All those in favor? unanimous? Moving on to agenda items. First one is dissolving of the waterfront acquisition committee.
I'd like to address the board on this issue. My name is Jared Kinlan. I'm from Winterport. I just want to clarify that I'm speaking only in my personal capacity, not in any way on behalf of any committee or group, although, as you know, I am a member of the waterfront acquisition committee. I speak today to demand that the majority of the council put an end to its acts of steamrolling anything that disagrees with. When the waterfront acquisition committee was formed under the last town manager and the last town council, a majority vote deemed it appropriate and necessary to have an independent committee review of a major town decision that would have incredible financial and governmental impact for the next several generations of people who call Winterport home. Now that the council has changed, or perhaps now that discussion in the community has been generated around this subject miraculously, an agenda item has been introduced to dissolve this committee, enact those in no uncertain terms, and attempt to silence any findings, and to simply proceed with personal intuition, or perhaps other motivating factors, and preemptively make a decision before a group of high and hardworking people get the opportunity to finish the research and outreach that is inherently necessary to make such worst decisions as this. This is to say nothing at all about the financial and procedural obstacles that have been deliberately left out to impede, delegitimize, and obstruct the essential work of this independent committee. Why? Well, that seems to be the million-dollar question that no one has been able to answer. However, the optics are undeniable. George Washington said, "Few men have the virtue to withstand the highest bid." I promise you that is a direct quote despite the poignant irony here. And famous Republican politician Thomas Jefferson said, "There is no possibility of remedy in any of the growing evils but by removing the corruption and restoring its lost principles. Every other correction is either useless or a new evil." I remind every person here that history remembers that nothing is secret that will not come to light. Please make an informed, independent decision. Please do what is right for your constituents and for this town.
Thank you, Jared. Cory?
I'd like to say something, Joe. I really feel that for the next few generations that the waterfront acquisition is working on something that we need to think about. Waterfront is important. Our town is called Winterport. We need to have some waterfront acquisition. I don't know if this is the right piece of property, but these people have worked on this report. They volunteered their out, and we asked them to. I feel like we need to hear this. It needs to be public, and we need to hear it. If we can hear it tonight, I'd love to hear it.
Cory, you have your hand up.
Yeah, I would like to make a motion to dissolve the waterfront acquisition committee. Not for, we don't need waterfront. This just is not the ideal piece of property that we need.
But why can't we hear what they have to say? They've spent two and a half months on it.
We're not silencing them. We're just making our decision.
We're just making our decision.
But you are, as you said the last meeting, you already made your decision before you even heard.
You're absolutely right. My decision was made. You're right, hundred percent.
So I don't see how that's fair to the town people.
I agree that we should not dissolve this right now because we, we, the town council voted to have this go on until February. And I think these people have given up their time, their energy, their effort, and, and to dismiss them like that, it's, it's not okay. We have a lot of good people in this town that would volunteer, but this kind of says, why should we? And I just, these are a lot of, these are hardworking people. They have jaws, they all have jaws. And they come in and they're doing this that we asked them to do as a council. And now we're just kind of dismissing it and saying, nah, never mind, we'll change them on.
You're free to make your own decision, and we just want to make darn sure that everybody knows what the facts are, and that you're making your decision in spite of those facts.
I'm gonna be honest with you. For the waterfront committee, yeah, I agree. I'd love to see one. On this piece of property and the stuff we're doing, no. On exploring other opportunities for Winterport with, with the waterfront, yes, I'm one hundred percent for it.
Change.
I just feel on this piece of property up here, we're, we're gonna devote so much time into it, and it's gonna be so many years down the road before you get everything ever straightened out to do anything, that we're gonna have so much wasted time versus this other property that probably could be looked into in doing something with that could come together soon.
If you are so convinced of that, let us find that information factual, and let's tell everyone and say Steve Klishman is telling the truth then.
Phil?
Order, order, Mr. Chairman. I would ask everyone in the audience, as people are recognized to speak, okay, the way of meeting is run, okay, you're recognized to speak. Just interjecting thoughts without being recognized again is not the way a meeting should be conducted, okay? So that's just for everyone, you know, here there. So everyone, everyone has a right to talk about any of these things, but we have to do it in an orderly fashion.
Okay, I'd like to say one more thing about that. I've got the meat. I've been, I've been here all my life too. And I just wanna, I, I think that because I've put so much time into it, that they may have found like procedures or little tidbits that we can apply to another acquisition if we did. So I feel like these, they might find things out or give us some, like make us more knowledgeable as we continue our search if we don't like this piece of property.
Yeah.
I also would like to read something about this. Again, I, I, I'm not talking on behalf of the committee, but as, as a resident of Winterport, so I'm coming both, to you both, as a resident of Winterport and a PhD in economics. I want to share my deep concern about the recent direction the council has taken regarding this property and the committee's work. I understand that our work may seem like a hassle and that the path forward seems complex, but I urge you to consider that with complexity, often comes opportunity. We have a rare chance to create meaningful public access for waterfront, something that could benefit waterfront residents for generations to come. I want to address a concern that's been raised repeatedly, that no funds, time should be spent until a decision is made against different properties. While appreciate the council's fiscal caution, I'd like to offer a different perspective. In any sound investment, whether public or private, some level of research and due diligence is essential before making any decision. Businesses routinely invest in market research and expert consultation to determine viability of a project. Why should our town approach this differently? The committee is composed of professionals with deep expertise in policy, finance, and community development. Personally, I work at a consulting firm, and the kind of analysis we're conducting would typically cost between a hundred and fifty to two hundred thousand dollars. Yet we're offering this word voluntarily because we believe in the value this project could bring to Winterport. We're also committed to ensuring that any potential development of the waterfront does not result in increased taxes for Winterport residents. That's why we've been actively engaging with experts, marina owners, operators, brand providers, who have confirmed that this is a rare and valuable opportunity. There are funding sources available to support public asset access initiatives, and we're working to identify and pursue them. This is more than just a piece of land. It's about creating something for the people of Winterport. I've seen what happens when scenic waterfronts are sold to out-of-state buyers who use them for just a few weeks a year. I saw it happen in Peaks Island, and we have a chance to do something different here, something lasting and meaningful, meaningful for our community. Please let us not rush our decision before we gather all the facts. Let's give the committee the time and modest support it needs to complete its work. The potential benefits, economic, recreational, cultural are too significant to ignore. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you.
What's your opinion, Joe?
Carolina.
So we have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I just want, I will tell you that I had a nice conversation with Sonny Campbell, who was one of the, I think, original members of that acquisition committee. He did give you a summary to a point of, you know, where, where they've come. Again, coming into this, you know, and everything, I had the impression that there was a lot of miscommunication, you know, between the council, the town manager at the time, and everything, and what the committee, you know, was, was working on. That's, that seems to be the feeling that I've had. I will tell you the particular property that we're talking about, you know, as Chairman Klishman said, could be tied up for many years in litigation, okay? Not only that, but I just got a phone call the other day from an individual who claims to be an heir from way back when, that, you know, had never been informed of what was taking place, okay? So that adds another wrinkle to that whole thing, all right, that we have, we have to consider, you know? So just, I just wanted to bring that up to everyone and everything, so. I agreed with Sonny when he said, hopefully, maybe we could do something with the committee, you know, continuing on, you know, to do something, you know, to, to find, which was originally intended, because I was town manager when we originally started this, you know? We were hoping to find somebody in town that might want to give us a right of way, might want to sell it to us for a fair price, you know, to provide something for the town, because we don't have waterfront access. You know, I would love to see that continue to go on, because I know you guys have put in a lot of hard work and a lot of good people, you know? So that's just my two cents.
Thank you. All along, there's another person back. Joe, did you want to speak?
Well, to start with, we took, we took that piece of property, and at the same time, we took properties at the, uh, mobile home pack. Town never paid a dime all the time that those mobile homes sat on that, that pack. I don't know how many thousands of dollars that should have added up to. I think we need to go back and take a look at some of these properties that we took in town. And I know, Phil, when you was in there, and I was on the tax board at the time, you used to work with people to try to, try to save their properties. And I'd like to see us go back and straighten that mess out that we've had going on the last three years, because I think it's disgusting. I think it's wrong what you've done. You've taken properties for the elderly people. You took a piece of property from a man that had a stroke, couldn't, couldn't pay his bill at the time. I think there's a thing called HANSIAP program out there, and it's been out there, and it never got, never got addressed in the last three years. I think we need to go back and take a look at that before we worry about taking all these properties that we took in the last three years. You need to take a high look at all of it.
Thank you, Joe. Jared?
As Mr. McTou said, the easement idea, the access idea without fully retaining the property is one of the very things that this committee is looking at. We just want to give you the honest feedback. We don't care what your decision is. I mean, we may care personally, as a committee, we're not, we have not made a decision. We just want you to look at the facts. Just look at them. You don't even have to like, just look at what you have to say.
My name's Tom Pierre-Paul. I, I think just the biggest thing I'm gonna point out is that its location is too far from town to begin with. And two, a simple cursory search will bring up that the marina in Bucksport in 2023, for fiscal year 2023, made thirteen thousand dollars. That was it. Whether we purchase an easement, whether we purchase the property itself, between operational costs, and that's straight off of the town's website and the town report from 2023 that they published in 2024, they only made thirteen thousand. There is no plausible way that we're gonna start a marina with no customer base and no businesses in town to draw people in with votes to stay and dog here, that we're gonna compete with a marina such as Bucksport right out of the gate. Any person that knows business and has run business knows when you first start launching a business, you're very unsuccessful in the beginning. I think the sum of money it's going to require, plus the actual headache with the property itself and the loopholes, sir, anyone that's familiar with it knows there's a significant amount of problems that are associated with it in actually taking the property, which I kind of feel like I need to reiterate, because I hear that we own, we don't own the property as a town. The only thing we own the right to is the back taxes we owe. Anything left over has to go to the owners, and, and I firmly believe in that, because, you know, what, what if something happens to me and I can't pay my taxes? All of a sudden, my waterfront becomes the town's? That's, it's the equity that is still mine. The only thing the town has a right to is the actual tax that we are owed, which I know the tax on that doesn't supersede a hundred thousand, and there's no way that ten-acre parcel is gonna be less than a million dollars. So I, I just don't understand how feasibly that is financially.
Yeah, thank you, Tom. All right. So we have a motion made to dissolve the Winterport waterfront acquisition. Do we have a second? One second. Is there any discussion? Cooper?
I think, like they brought up, if they had a chance to just tell us what they came up with, they, most of them know a lot of people's decisions already. To let them continue for the, what, they got two months? I don't see what, how that will do. Just, they have done a lot of work. I'm not for the property, but I'm for the waterfront.
I'm for the waterfront.
Right.
I'm not for this piece of, that's why I'm standing here. In this, this group was formed for this piece of property, to look into it. So that's where, what I'm at, is I don't support this. The waterfront acquisition, yes, I want them, you know, to have a committee to look for waterfront, but this certain piece of property where we all feel the same is what we're up against. It's not the committee, it's basically if the committee wanted to expand into looking into different waterfront along the Pnomstok versus this piece of property. Sonny?
A couple of things. And so thank you for, for all the talk. One of the premises that this committee was founded on, or was at least articulated to the committee, was that there was no legal challenge to the fact that this had been tax-acquired. I'm hearing otherwise, and, you know, really coming from every direction. So, I mean, it's worth noting, if it's true that this has not been determined, which it seems to be true, then it does also seem that focusing on this one property doesn't make a lot of sense. So, I mean, if there's a legal opinion that this is stretched out for a long period of time, what's the, right?
Right.
And so, you know, I think that'd be a question to answer as, if we can, as we're going through this. The other thing I'd mention, because I took interest in it, when, when Phil was first town manager, or, you know, during his time town manager, there was the waterfront access committee that started, and then COVID, you know, just kind of fell to the wayside. I had to come to the council two or three years ago through the town office to get appointed to that committee. I believe I am the only appointed member of the waterfront access committee. I know that to be a fact. So, I mean, as you think about the idea of wanting to establish waterfront access, which we've all seemed interested in, I mean, please know that there is also the waterfront access committee, committee of one truly dormant. So maybe there's a world where we more are, you know, reconstitute that.
Right. Maybe go back into that.
Maybe focus on this property if it's tax-acquired, which isn't clear to me, but certainly a broader, you know, broader charge to, to find waterfront access for the town.
Right. Yeah. Jared?
Wouldn't it be within the scope of the council to do as Sonny suggested and, and just shift the focus? Can't you direct us to?
To dissolve the waterfront acquisition and move everything to waterfront access?
Well, I don't, I don't think dissolving would be the right term, because you're simply just moving all of, all of.
Right, we'd be moving it, but we'd be dissolving the acquisition and going over to that Winterport waterfront access committee. Everything would be over into that.
I think if you dissolve and then, and then you reappoint folks, or we bring our materials from the other committee, isn't combining just?
I think that if we dissolved it, then we would reappoint. We would have to, if we dissolve the waterfront acquisition, then we would have to reappoint to the waterfront access.
And without a tight, I'm sorry, so without a tight timeline to do that, you know, then, you know, the members of the waterfront access committee, if they take time to work with the council, with the town manager, to truly understand what's your charge, what are your parameters?
Right.
And go get it.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yep.
I think we're missing one important point there that nobody seems to know. This is not one property. This is five tax accounts. R eleven, two forty-five, these five separate pieces of property owned by three different groups of people, and three of those properties are owned by the devices of. Getting that finalized is going to be a nightmare, and we don't even know which ones we own. At least I know. Thank you.
I thought they were looking at another piece of property too that was up on the Oak Point route. Was it four or four acres? Am I right?
Yeah, fifty-five lower, oh, fifty-five.
Okay. So wouldn't you keep your committee together for that parcel?
Sure, they committee for that.
What?
Conservation committee is doing that one.
Isn't it this waterfront one? You guys have too many fingers.
Mr. Chairman?
Phil?
Just a little more. It's, when I spoke with Sonny the other day, I said, I'd love to see that morph, you know, into what it is. But I also pointed out that, Sonny, when a committee is set up, all right, and there's a charge from the town council to the committee for what they, you know, would like them to look into, okay? They also should, you know, have funds available that would go before town meeting for the people to vote on, in case you have to do, you know, research, you know, things that are gonna end up costing money, all right? There should be funds available. From all I could see going into this, there were never funds available. I sat at a meeting here not long ago where they were requesting to have funds to pay a lawyer bill and everything, you know? So, I mean, there are steps that need to be taken in order to do a committee correctly, okay? And that's, you know, just, just for everyone's information.
Cooper?
The water access, the regional water access has like thirty thousand, right?
Yes.
Somewhere?
Yeah, and I believe, you know, we have a thirty thousand dollars that was put aside back from the sale of, to DMNJ of the property that they have out at the town, you know, town transfer station and stuff, so.
Point, point, point of order. That money is only available per the town meeting warrant article for the purchase of property, not for legal fees or extraneous.
Yeah, we'd have to look into it. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm, I'm one hundred percent sure of that. If I could make one other point. The charge to the committee was made the night the, the, the motion was made. Cory made the motion, something about allowing the committee to do its due diligence, which the committee has certainly been doing. And it was expanded on at that meeting. I took notes at that meeting so that I could take back to the committee what its charge would be. So that was very clear. Unfortunately, there is no YouTube video of that. I looked at the minutes for that meeting. There was no record of my request to have the council give us the charge, and so there's no recording of that, except for my notes on the agenda of that meeting, so that I could take it back. The other thing is, the committee is not involved in the legal issues. That is the town. The length of time it might take for the town to get that resolved would allow the committee to gather a great deal of information. So I think those are two separate issues. This is looking at the viability of this piece of property as a, this beautiful, beautiful piece of property, actually, for the town. It's a lot farther to go to Bucksport to put a boat in, or even Verona Island than just up north Main Street, so I get the issue of it being outside of the town. Town is a little misinformed. I just offer all of that for the public as well as for the council.
Thank you. Joe?
You forgot to bring out Frank for that. Hey, have a nice day.
I just want to make the point that I think, other than, you know, I think that it should be dismissed for the sake of the, the committee has solely focused on obtaining my father's property. The social media page has been completely misused, and misinformation has been put out there. It's just a poke at my father, and tired of seeing it. I have expressed how I felt about it, but I think at this point, I just think the committee is so focused on my father's piece of land and because that's what. Just my opinion. I think having a different committee, like he said, would be a great idea in the sense of getting rid of this one, make it more so waterfront access.
Yep. We'll make a decision as we're gonna put seven thirty.
Yeah, just put in the vote.
Oh, we're gonna put it to vote. There's, it's been a second on, on dissolving it. Is any other questions? All those in favor? All those against? Three to one passes. The Winterport waterfront is dissolved. Moving on, Kevin Kelly. He's not here tonight?
Not here at all.
Moving on to the Fernal Field bid award.
Mr. Chairman, are you going to ask if there are any conflicts of interest regarding this particular bid on the council?
No, I'm not. Joe?
I'd like to know and all, and I know the way that contract is put out there, I don't think it was done the right way. It was never put in the paper or anything else. And also in that contract, it don't say in there that when the Fernal Field is not being used by the Winterport or the Fernal Field Dragway, that can be used by the people in Winterport and that's the number one. And I'd like, I'd like to see that added to the contract on our agreement, right? You can't stop snowmobiles since an I T S rail runs through there. Four-wheelers, you use that a lot in some of the towns, and hundreds of.
And that's already been discussed, the snowmobile trail, everything that's, when that's like going through there. Off to the side, she has said, is, is no issues.
I'd like to make sure I put in there that people in Winterport a lot of use that, but it's not.
Mr. Chairman?
In reviewing what went out and everything, my, I would voice a concern over the fact of the access for townspeople back in the olden days when the other previous drag strip group had it. People could still get out there, people would still go away from where the drags are taking place, have access to their property and everything. I don't see anything in the verbiage in that, in what was put forward that still allows people to do that when the drags aren't running. It's like, because they have total control over it during, during the time that the lease is in, in effect, you know, and they, and they're the ones to make that, those decisions. So that would just be something I would point out that I think would have been a good, you know, addition to that, you know, when it went out the contract, so.
Hi, everyone. If I haven't had the pleasure of meeting you, my name's Crystal Lancaster. I run Fernal Field Dragway. And it's honestly been an unspoken agreement that obviously Fernal Field has always belonged to people in Winterport. You allow us to lease it and run our dragway operation along with community events on, like at the facility. And those that have worked with me anyway know that we leave the gates open at sunrise, and we close them at sunset with the fact that all residents are welcome. I've never had an issue. Thankfully, we've never had any security concerns. We love seeing everybody. We love meeting everybody, and we just ask that neutral respect is given. So we haven't had an issue, and it's really just been an unwritten agreement that the townspeople come in and you use the property that is yours that you lease to us. So although there's no formal verbiage, we, we're very open and honest about that, and I think I've communicated it on social media, in person, in writing, but I'm happy to do whatever is needed, because that, that has never changed. I mean, the, the dragway Fernal Field is open whenever. I don't know if that helps ease anybody's up mind, but.
I don't agree with it. They, I don't agree with it unwritten. That's something that they, they at any time could revoke, and we've signed a contract for them. No, that's not. And it used to be, I mean, I remember this, and I'm sure you guys do, weekends, people used to go out there and ride their snowmobiles. And the gate wasn't locked because they had, so somebody could get out there with an ambulance if there was trouble. None of that happens anymore.
That's not true. My brother goes and unlocks the gate every morning and closes it every.
At night? Are you gonna be out there on the snowmobiles? That's what everybody goes, nighttime ride.
The gate has always been closed in the evenings. It's always closed.
No, it hasn't.
On the border, Mr. Chairman, please raise your hand and be recognized.
Sorry, I'm on my question.
Yeah, you know, by the, by the chair.
It, it's not true at all that, that used to be unlocked, especially during the winter when there was families out there playing, and that's what they used to do. And that's what they used to do, but now you can't. That's my opinion.
Joe?
That gate was never locked until cases come into town. These are the ones that decided there ought to be a locked gate out there. The gate was never locked. After they did that, I was the one that was unlocking it in the morning. And I did unlock it by five thirty usually. And now sometimes it don't even get unlocked until noon time. Depends on what day it is. And, uh, al- also Barbara used to close it, but it got closed at that. Uh, I, I'd rather see that gate come down so nobody has to worry about it because it's a good place for everybody to, to go and do things and not have to worry about whether that gate's unlocked or not. And never was before until you had your last down there.
Thank you.
Just a quick point. I mean, I'm not sure if it was written in the lease before that that was, that access was granted, but yes, I don't, I don't think it was taken out of the lease for Fernal Field right away. I don't think the name's been changed because of that. And, and no, I think this all stems from a social media point, uh, post that was done after our Trump retreat event. There was, uh, a side-by-side on the property as we were cleaning up. It was dark out and they were kind of screwing around. Uh, there was some noises heard of, you know, some tampering with some things that belonged to racers, and it was a concern of mine. So I brought that post up to let people know that access is available, but please pass through and don't loiter. That's all I was trying to, to, that's all I was trying to bring up is that, you know, as the leaseholders and as the racers that are there leaving their property on site, we don't want that tampered with. It's just a mutual respect thing we're looking for. No one's saying we can't access anything or like, we, we want more than anything for the, the community to be able to access that.
Would you be willing, if we wanted to add an addendum to the contract for, that you guys would say the townspeople could use it if you guys aren't in there? Would that be an option?
I mean, it's already something that happens now anyway, so.
Just to clarify.
Just to clarify. That means, you know, I know, like, you're saying, yeah, we don't have a problem with it.
Yeah, no problem.
But if you put it in writing.
Yeah. If you would like, if it makes everyone feel better, yeah, we'll put it in writing and we're happy to sign in the document, no problem.
Okay. Mary Ann?
Just a, a question and then a, a clarification. Um, so the bid hasn't been opened, but it's already been awarded?
The bid's been opened.
Oh, when was it opened?
Oh, October.
On the thirty first?
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth.
Thirtieth, I believe.
Four oh one.
Yeah, third, yeah, you were here and I was here for it, yes. There was only one bid submitted.
Okay, okay, thank you for that.
Yeah, one.
Just a clarifying.
One bid we only received.
Okay. Um, the original lease for the property was from May to November. Um, it was.
December, right? December thirty first is when you owe us.
No, the original.
Oh, the original.
Very original bill. So it was a short period of time. The hours were very different. There was no exclusive possession. It did not include the north-south runway, except two thousand feet of the north-south runway. Some of it was included. So this is a significant change, which, which has been addressed for the Conservation Committee, was very concerned about it, sent you some recommendations, except for the snowmobile piece were, um, ignored. So I think it's important that, that the people who have been speaking have been speaking truth. It, the, um, the, um, original Dragway lease for years, um, a lot was open, um, all, except when races were going on. That's all.
Any other discussion?
Has there been a motion made?
Will be.
I'll make a motion to, uh, award the bid to Fernal Field Dragway.
Second. With amendments?
Yeah, with, with amendments. Yeah. With the amendment added to it.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous. Town managers' report.
Hey. I give you a copy of, uh, report along with some documentation backing it up. Uh, and just so you know, the roads, uh, there were five driveway culverts installed, two on the stream, two on the Baker Road, and one on Cole's Corner. This is from October to date, you know, from your last meeting. Uh, there's been ditching done on the Baker Road and Cole's Corner Road along with knocking down the shoulders. Potholes been patched, zero ton lawnmower's been worked on, uh, removed some dead, dead animals. Um, set up for the grant elections, uh, grant center elections. Okay, in our office, I spoke with a representative from C A I, uh, who was doing the digital mapping for the town, it was real estate maps. So I gave you, you know, the information there. I will let you know, uh, I've got a meeting next Monday with, uh, Joe, another gentleman from that company. The digital maps, they have, they host part of what was, uh, contracted with them. Uh, after the maps are done and everything, uh, they, they, it's on their website that they host. That's, uh, a continuing charge to the town of three thousand dollars a year for them to host that website. Uh, and again, I don't know how, how much, you know, the council is aware of, you know, what's going on. I asked them about changes to the maps that come every year. Where Herb used to do that, we'd get the maps done once every five years, maybe, because not a lot of activity, you know? We don't have great expansion. And Herb would just draw it on the existing maps from the year to year. With digital mapping, we have to go through them to upload it on the thing. They're supposed to let me know what that price would be, you know? So there would be additional monies that would be needed, needed available as time goes on, okay? I contacted, uh, Maine Municipal Association about, uh, conducting a manager search for the town. Lady by the name of Janet Kelly, she runs her human resource department. She's on vacation, she's coming back tomorrow, so she has three messages, so I'm hoping she'll, she'll reach out, uh. Ambulance director has spoke with me about an agreement, there was a five-year agreement that, uh, was part of your September second meeting, um, that, uh, according to the minutes, uh, Council Ronco made a motion, accept the service contract, then was seconded by Council again, and it was a five, five to nothing vote, okay? They were looking for a copy, they were looking for a copy of that contract that was signed. We can't find, we can't find it anywhere. We've looked, we're continuing to look for it. So in your packet, I gave you, uh, the, the edited version that was originally there. I now have a clean copy that I got from the ambulance, ambulance department. Um, but I did look at the meeting minute, meeting on video and there was never a motion made. Uh, what Council Ronco said was, it looks good to me, okay? Nobody seconded anything. There was not a hand vote, all right? So I don't know, you know, what took place. So it will be revisited at our next scheduled meeting. I'll give you the co- the contract as presented that evening and everything for, uh, but you have a copy of what it would be, you know, for you to look over between now and then and make, decide what you might want to do with it, okay? Um, also wanted to point out that the school resource officer, uh, has started up the Winterport Schools. Just so that everyone's aware that, uh, town of Winterport, to have that resource officer, besides paying the school for it, is also paying directly thirty-three point three percent of his, you know, overly yearly package, the total. That includes benefits and everything. His, his package for a resource officer is like a hundred and thirty-four thousand dollars a year. So we're paying forty-four thousand dollars a year to have a resource officer up there, okay? In, uh, we're going to be discussing, while in the consent agenda coming up, uh, we've got resignations from both the existing assessor and also from the code enforcement officer. Uh, so I met with a gentleman by the name of Josh Berry from R C S about providing assessing and code enforcement services for the town. The elected assessors, uh, Sue Rio, Mark Bellin, and Ellie Jordan were at the meeting, along with Chairman, uh, Clisham. Uh, he has presented us with, uh, a proposal, okay? Again, that's for you to review between now and our next meeting when we'll have a formal vote on it, okay? Uh, but, uh, he comes highly recommended from Herb Dickey, who did assessing for the town of Winterport for, uh, I don't know how long, you know? Long before I became involved, you know, so, um, so we'll go from there. I'm looking for direction for the grant center use, uh, from the council. Uh, I provided you some paperwork, uh, right now on Sundays, not every Sunday, but we do have the Cavalry Church out of Bangor that uses that facility, okay? There's never been a lease of any sort, you know, that I've come across. They don't pay anything for using the grant center, you know? And of course, there's heat, electricity, everything, uh, being there. So I'm looking, because, again, back when I was town manager, we had a policy that covered, you know, the fact that, you know, people use it, there's going to be a charge for, you know, they have a pay part of, you know, the, the utilities while they're in, in the building. So it's something for you to consider before the next meeting also. M M A insurances, I'm sorry.
I, I just wanted to talk on that church for a minute, Bill, for.
Can we hold up, let him finish his report and then I'll let you speak?
M M A insurances will be increasing on January first. They cover our, uh, town, overall town insurance plus health insurance, dental, et cetera. Um, that's a common practice with them. We always used to consider it in, in our budget process because they work on a calendar year, not on a fiscal year like we do. So they go from January to January. So I'm hoping, I'm hoping that there was enough money budgeted to cover those things with the increase coming up, but that's neither here nor there. I also intend, um, talking to you, I'd like to make some changes out of the transfer station, uh, bringing back services that have been greatly reduced over the past years. Uh, I know there's been a lot of talk about the second time around shop and store and everything that, you know, we started a long time ago for the people of the town and the access to it, you know, which was limited. Um, this ta- town of Winterport is covered by the Maine Torque Claims Act in the state. Uh, we are covered under a claims being bade on us. Any volunteer that we have is, you know, a part of the town is already, already covered. Um, you, you know, we don't necessarily need to have somebody out there all the time watching over things. We have two attendants that are there the whole time. So I'd like to see that back reopened. I'd also like to see us, again, take things that we always used to take. The state of Maine has always charged each town to provide a place for the townspeople to be able to get rid of their refuse and all things. That includes tires, that includes everything, you know? We have to make availability there. That was stopped. Uh, hazardous waste, you know, or, you know, light bulbs, TVs, all those things, uh. People could bring them out while it was open and everything. Now we've gone to every quarter, there's a day that people could do it. So I, I'd like to see those changes, you know, put back to the way things used to be done, because people's taxes have gone up quite a bit and the services have been cut back, from what I can see, so. Um, and also on that, in that same vein, I also want, want to talk to you about changing the way we observe holidays out at the transfer station. Back again, when I was here, we, if a holiday fell on a day that they weren't working, those individuals were allowed a floating holiday. We never closed the transfer station because of a holiday, unless the holiday fell during the time that they worked. I'd like to go back to that because we, I came in and we had a ton of complaints from people that had been out there this past Thursday, you know, and, and they were closed for Veterans Day, you know, which was on, on that, you know, Tuesday. So, um, I would, I would just like to go back to the floating holiday thing. So again, for you to consider, you know, next time at, you know, at a full meeting. And that's all I have for the report. Thank you, Phil.
Sure. Ellie?
I just wanted to talk on the cupboard and we'll start off on a positive note. The Women's Club did their turkey drive this weekend. They brought us forty-two turkeys and a little over thirty-two hundred dollars in cash. So we're good there. Fernal Field brought us some turkeys and turkey fans and some, a cash donation. Yep. Okay. And my other complaint was the church. I've complained about them before, but nobody listens to me, so this time I'd like you to listen. They're upstairs, we're downstairs. We're both a nine oh one C. Yes. Yes. We have to take care of our own trash. They don't take care of their trash. They have a habit of leaving dirty diapers in our trash can in the bathroom, and we get to take care of their trash. That's not really fair. They should have to sign the lease. We had to sign the lease. We have to get insurance. And I've asked a hundred times to see the church's insurance. I've never seen it yet.
They do have it.
I've never seen it. And then they, they use part of the downstairs for the Sunday School group, which I get. But this weekend, we had all them turkey bags sitting out with all the stuff in there that was non-perishable. And we had the Sunday School class help us just generate things again. So sometimes they are going to have to just stay upstairs. I'm not saying all the time, but sometime. And when we got the generator put in, we had to sign a packet of paper like that that we would leave it there. They put a heat pump in and they didn't sign anything. I just think if you're going to have two tenants, you ought to treat them alike. If we have to take care of our trash, they have to take care of theirs.
Thank you, Ellie. You have any other committee reports?
Just the one that you had outside your packet that, uh, Sonny had dropped off from the waterfront acquisition committee, but, uh, I wasn't, I have no other reports that have been.
All right, nothing for the chair to report? Uh, public comments on non-agenda items?
Uh, Mr. Chair?
Phil?
Uh, we still, consent agenda, uh, hasn't been addressed.
All that checks, we changed that. Yeah. Uh, consent agenda.
Mr. Chair?
Phil?
Uh, I point out to you that in, in that you have Travis Gould's, uh, resignation, okay? Um, you also have paperwork for appointing Maureen as treasurer and tax collector and appointing me as deputy treasurer and deputy tax collector. You also, outside of your packet, which I like included as an amendment to the agenda, is, is a written rec- resignation, uh, from Dylan, who was the code enforcement officer. He got it to us later this afternoon, so that's why it's outside the packet. So with that, you know, approval of the consent agenda, I'd like to see, you know, amended to include his reservation.
Make a motion to set the consent agenda with the addition of Dylan George's resignation letter.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous.
Mr. Chair, and the paperwork is in the signature book for the council to sign on those appointments and everything so that we have a record of it.
Approval of warrants? Make a motion to approve the warrant?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Unanimous? Public comments on non-agenda items. Mary Ann?
I have a letter of commendation I'd like to read. Dear Town Council members, I am writing to express appreciation for the quality of work completed by our public works crews, Jeff and Jason. They recently completed a ditching project from the corner of Lebanon Road and Wake Street to just past the El Hach residence. My son commented on the finished job by saying, you could tell they cared about their work, and I agree. They produced a finished pro- project that not only looks good, but more importantly, will prevent the road from breaking up more than it already has. When the job is done right, our roads will last longer.
thereby saving taxpayers the expense of preventable road repair. I commend them for their commitment to best practices and work they do for Winterport, and I ask you to present this letter of appreciation to them on our behalf. Would you agree to that?
Enter it into the record, thank you, Mary Ann.
I also, um, have a question that, one of the October meetings, uh, the town council was asked to, um, ask, um, the town attorney the question of how does a town council rule override the charter regarding public comments at regular and special meetings? So do you have a response, another person asks that it be posted, so that everyone would understand, um, that? Have you gotten that opinion from the attorney?
I haven't, no.
Mr. Chair, uh, I'm not aware of that, you know, of what looked like, before, before I started and everything, and I don't know if the previous town manager, uh, that would normally be his job to, you know, talk to the attorney about it. Uh, our attorney happens to be here this week.
We have an attorney right now.
Has anyone approached you about that particular?
No, I'm just manager, I'm Tim G, the town attorney, and I have not, um, answered that particular question, I've not, you know, compared the charter to the policy, happy to do that.
We'll find out.
We'll, we'll get that, thank you very much.
Joe?
First of all, I'd like to thank you, Phil, for coming, coming back and saving our town. The, the next thing is, I would like to see the public go back out to Deb's Variety, not at the Town Dump. People, the, the Town Dump's open forty hours a week, Deb's Variety's open well over a hundred hours a week. The Bay workers always went there, they tell, we had a town manager that had a vendetta on me. And I'd like to see the, uh, that Bay work go back out to Deb's Variety, so the people will live out back to see what's going on in town. That we, thank you.
Mr. Chair, just to address that, Joe, I intend, one step at a time, I intend on doing that and also back to the Winterport House of Pizza in town, there's old book there that people could look at, you know, whenever, getting a sandwich and everything. I intend to do that, again, yeah.
Um, I'm Kimball Rockliff, I've done, uh, I coached rec soccer the past two years, and I'm involved with the rec, uh, basketball program too, and I heard from the rec director, Al Baran, last week that there's no, there's a budget deficit, and so now there's no funding for the basketball program. I was wondering about that, if it's true or not, we have ninety-eight kids signed up right now, and we can't even get them a t-shirt, so.
Phil, sure, yeah, I met with Al, uh, because, uh, and I made him aware that what happened, uh, for soccer, okay? Uh, they over expended their, their line that was put, put aside for soccer by like seven hundred and fifty dollars, okay? Don't quote me, I use the exact figures, 'cause I don't have it, me in front of, in front of me right now, but, and there were also some other things for supplies and stuff that were over, overspent. You know, so the, what's available left within that budget, the town can over, by law, we can spend, uh, more money that's budgeted in a particular line item, but we can't over expend, uh, the total department expenditures, okay? Uh, and, you know, there are certain exceptions to that within the, for roads and things for emergencies, but, so I just informed him that he's on a limited, limited amount to work with, you know, right now. So, yeah.
Mary Ann?
Will the town accept donations, so that program can continue? The chart, the town meeting gives you the ability to accept donations, um, that are in the best interest of the town.
Thank you. How does that work, Phil?
Well, donations, well, like, when, when we accept donations, they're earmarked for cer, certain things, you know, if people give a donation. What happens, town meeting gives us the authority to spend money, right? At a meeting, the, uh, continuing town meeting, people would be made aware that these donations have been, you know, done, so we would, might increase the budget by that amount, but the people still have to approve, right, the total amount for, for that particular department. Is, is that correct, Tim? Yeah, so, uh, you know, so that, we, we couldn't take money today, you know, to keep that program going and spend it, you know, for that program, because we don't have the authority by the town to do it. I mean, we could call a special town meeting, you know, and everything, but that, you know, that's, you know, I'm just saying that is where we are, you know, unfortunately.
Farnum Field Drive Way will purchase the ninety-six t-shirts.
I was just gonna say that.
In the past, when my daughter there was going through rec ball and stuff, I had stepped up on the air and, and some other businesses have stepped up in the, in the business in town and sponsored the t-shirts. And I think that was a great idea, and if they need help, I'm, I'm going to help.
Thank you. Joe?
I, I was gonna say, say, uh, try to help, sorry, we put five hundred dollars, try to see, uh, the basketball, while we help them out, if that's something that we can give.
Another donation?
Yeah.
Uh, Sheridan Rockliff, taught school here thirty-eight years, lived here since I was ten. I don't understand why there is not enough in the budget to fund this, so, so I, I understand, you do, I looked at the last few that I could find online, twenty-twenty-two, and, and looked at those line budgets, and there was always a substantial amount of money, most of it's volunteer, except for the t-shirts. Maybe buy new balls, um, for the various sports, so why is there a deficit? When it's, obviously something's wrong, either when you budget it, or whoever looks into that budget doesn't understand what things cost or what's needed, or, but, yeah, a hundred children that, that should not happen in this town, ever.
Phil? Mr. Chair? What I will, what I will tell you, it is public knowledge, John, I asked the, uh, rec director, you know, why so much money was spent, you know, out of, of, you know, account overseas, he said, "'Cause that's what I was directed to do," okay?
Oh, we're saying, this is, oh, it's a town manager that everybody wants gone, I don't believe that, I don't believe that at all.
Well, you know, I mean, I, I just, no, I'm just, I'm just saying that, that was, you know, that's his answer to me. You know, because, you know, I asked him, Al, why, you know, why has the budget been overextended for this one thing? He said, "'Cause that's what I was directed to do."
Soccer?
So. Soccer, yeah.
I have a kiddo in the, right, you wrote about it all, and he played soccer and T-ball and basketball, and I did find it odd that, um, in T-ball, they charged us the twenty-five dollars and we paid for the shirts, but then the other two seasons, they didn't, I mean, I just think it, it's, I guess somebody offered to donate, but like, the twenty-five dollars is the fee to pay for those items, also, you know, it worked out when we did for T-ball, so I don't know, I'm sure there's some families who can't, but it does help if some do.
Jared?
Are material donations, uh, covered under the same laws as financial donations? If someone wanted to donate?
If somebody wanted, if somebody wanted to buy t-shirts for the basketball team, no.
So is the rec department hypothetically put out a list of things they needed? Someone could materially donate, yes?
Anything else under public comment?
So, that's what is covered and the church. We don't. I don't know what it keeps, or was ever given, or was able to just let them move in there. No lease, no nothing, they're under the town church, what benefit is it for us? They're driving the cupboard out. The cupboard is for the Town of Winterport. They're stealing their food, their.
Just damn, correct.
But it don't matter. What benefit is that church to us in town, in this town, when they're from Brewer?
Right.
What? It's no sense to me whatsoever, and then, then, the cupboard who is downstairs has to have a lease. And, and insurance, and they upstairs just do whatever they want, just Casey to let them come in.
We'll take care of it, Dean.
We're gonna get it taken care of.
The church upstairs, probably six, eight weeks ago, the subject overflowed, and the church never called anybody. We went in Monday morning trying to be nice, 'cause we have a state inspector come, or federal inspector.
Federal inspector.
And guess what we were met with? We called the town office, and they hadn't even called, that's not a very good tenant.
Phil? We, we get, we get, we get, we get the message, you know, so, we need to move on.
We need a motion to exec, enter into executive session, one M R S A four oh five six A, personal matters.
And the second one, too.
Just taking a breath, Phil.
Oh, okay.
One M R S A four oh five six E, consultant with legal.
Okay, quiet.
Discussion?
Counsel.
Second. Discussion, all those in favor? Unanimous, preliminary to executive session.
All right, I'd like to thank everyone for coming, but you have to leave now.
Good catch on that.